This meeting is called to order. Tonight, we have the Reverend Ruth Pugh from St. James AME Church, and she drove all the way from Fayetteville to be with us tonight. Thank you, ma'am.
To God be the glory.
Every eye closed, every heart centered. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we come now, Lord, and we ask you to hear the prayer of your servant. We ask, Father God, that you would shine the light upon your people for your name's sake. Father God, shine your light on us. Father God, shine your light on our desolations, on our emptiness, in the name of Jesus. Father God, we ask right now, Heavenly Father, as we gather here today, we ask, Father God, that you, Father God, be in the midst of this meeting. We ask, God, that you dispense wisdom, that you dispense compassion and integrity. Father God, for we know that your wisdom is durable and your wisdom is eternal. Your wisdom always proves superior to any human-thinking person, and, God, we thank you for your wisdom. We ask for your guidance, Father God, as they deliberate and as they make decisions on the lives of the people that they serve. Father God, we ask right now to be in the midst of their decisions. Teach them, Father God, to rely on you. Teach all of us to rely on you, Father God, and even if the world around us seems to sway a different direction, Father God, keep your way. Help us to approach our responsibilities to the people, God, in the name of Jesus. Open our minds and humble our hearts seeking the greater good. Grant us clarity, Father God, in their decision-making, in their discussion, respect in their differences, shared gold values, creating a better future for us all. May this reflect your values, justice, kindness, and truth. It is in Jesus' name that we will all say, "Amen."
Amen.
(inaudible)
Thank you. (inaudible) Thank you, Reverend Pugh. Have a good trip, ma'am. Okay, is there anything on the consent agenda that anyone would like to pull?
Mr. Chair, I move the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, consideration of community health and well-being proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Health and Well-Being Proclamation. John, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, go ahead. We'll go ahead and read the proclamation and then ask for some comments.
Yes, sir.
And then we'll get together for a photo and celebrate that.
Sounds great.
Yeah, you'll get your very own copy, too, so it'd be nice. Whereas the week of April 7th, 2025, is recognized nationally as Public Health Week. Embracing the theme "It Starts Here," which underscores that effective public health begins with proactive choices made within our homes, neighborhoods, and communities. Whereas New Hanover County's 2024-2028 Strategic Plan emphasizes community safety and well-being, committing to connect residents with services that support both physical and mental health, and to reduce the top three causes of premature death, and those are heart disease and accidents by specific annual targets. And whereas this commitment has translated into measurable progress, heart disease-related deaths among residents under age 75 have decreased 6%, and the county has seen promising reductions in traffic-related fatalities in the same age group, reinforcing that positive health outcomes often begin with local action. And whereas these improvements reflect the work of our public health professionals who deliver evidence-based programs, foster cross-sector collaboration, and continuously adapt to meet the evolving needs of our community, and whereas New Hanover County values equity, ensuring all residents, regardless of background, have fair and just opportunities to achieve optimal health, advances this principle through inclusive policies, community outreach, and strong partnerships. And whereas, as a part of Public Health Week, New Hanover County joins the YWCA of Lower Cape and recognizes Black Maternal Health Week from April 7th through the 17th, 2025, and acknowledges the persistent disparities faced by Black women in maternal health outcomes, including higher rates of maternal mortality and adverse birth outcomes, both locally and nationally. And whereas Black Maternal Health Week brings attention to the need for culturally competent care, equitable access to health services, and the removal of systemic barriers that impact maternal health while amplifying the voices and experiences of Black women and families. And whereas the 2025 Public Health Week theme "It Starts Here" reminds us that building healthier, more equitable communities begins with intentional action and compassion at the local level. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners that April 7th through the 14th, 2025, shall be recognized as Public Health Week, and April 11th through the 17th, 2025, as Black Maternal Health Week in New Hanover County. And we encourage all residents to support efforts that strengthen the health and well-being of all individuals in our community, adopted the 7th day of April, 2025, by the hand of William E. Reivenbart, Chair. John?
It's all yours, buddy.
Thank you. Good for your consideration of the Community Health and Well-Being Proclamation. Johannover County has over 200 health professionals that are striving to advance our ongoing well-being in our community, something I'm significantly proud of. Not only do these individuals support a multitude of programs through our county, however, they also further their reach by collaborating with many community partners that also are striving to advance initiatives of building a resilient and healthy county. This year's proclamation, or this year's Public Health Week notice of "It Starts Here"
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, emergency medical service, or mental health intervention, and whereas New Hanover County's 24-28 Strategic
says exactly that: Progress begins locally. And I'm happy to say we have the right team and community partners to advance addressing
emphasizes community safety and well-being, committing to dispatching 90% of our urgent
barriers to care, addressing gaps in care, and, more importantly, reducing disease.
911 calls within 90 seconds.
Thank you for your consideration and your ongoing support.
And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, Thank you. Let's get our picture made together.
Oh, wait a minute, we want to...
That's all right. paramedics, and mental health clinicians is critical to the protection of life and preservation
Yeah, that's all right. Yeah, yeah, motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve, or did you already make that motion?
I think I just did that.
of property.
Second.
And whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, a photo, yeah.
upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained over the radio from citizens who (inaudible) telephoned the New Hanover County 911 Communications Center. Whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications are a vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunications of the New Hanover County 911 Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, care of individuals in crisis, and treatment of patients. Whereas each telecommunications has exhibited New Hanover County's shared values of professionalism, equity, innovation, stewardship, and accountability in the performance of their duties. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners, April 13th through 19th, 2025, would be recognized as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in New Hanover County in honor of the telecommunications whose diligence and professionalism keep our communities safe, adopted the 7th day of April, 2025, by Bill Robenbart. Hope, have at it.
So, on behalf of New Hanover County 911 Communications, I want to express our sincere gratitude for your consideration of recognizing our telecommunications during that week. Proclamation is more than recognition. It's a meaningful reminder of the incredible responsibility our telecommunications carry. These professionals are often unsafe first responders, the calm, steady voice on the other end of the line when some help the most. They are lifelines, guiding callers and responders through moments of crisis with clarity, compassion, and commitment. In 2024, our state handled 480,885 events, including 52,000 EMS, 58,000 fire, and 315,000 law enforcement events. New Hanover County received 169,374 911 calls last year alone. 94% of these calls were answered in 10 seconds or less with an average answer time of 1.73 seconds. Among those are top-impact communicators, each answered 4,000 911 calls individually. These are more than just numbers. They represent real emergencies, real people in distress. Behind those statistics are voices that stay steady during the storm, they offer calm guidance, and often provide lifesaving instructions, whether it's helping someone through childbirth, controlled lead, or reassurance during a crisis. These actions often make the difference in the severity of the outcome of these calls. Here are a few examples of what all they worked on last year. 125 pregnancy or childbirth-related calls, including four babies delivered before responders were born. 1,322 structured fires, 218 rescue, 677 cardiac arrests, 104 overdoses that were noted at the beginning of the call, 1,269 seizures, 7,295 falls, and 103 shooting calls. Each call requires decisive action, deep knowledge, and empathy. Our telecommunications are the lifelines. They ensure responders have accurate and timely information, and they often begin their emergency response long before the first person arrives on scene. They embody New Hanover County's core values, and they do so with humility. Rarely seen, but always essential. So, again, thank you. Your support reinforces how vital these professionals are to the safety and well-being of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And just so everybody will know, these people are the person that you, when you call 911 and never see them, right? You'll never see them. But they're the ones that make it happen, and boy, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just a quick follow-up. Hope, did I hear you say 103 shooting calls?
Yes. Keep in mind that when we have shootings, a lot of times we have multiple callers calling in for that shooting.
Of course, yeah.
So, while there may be one shooting, we may have five to 10 calls for that.
Got it. Thank you for that context. With that, I move to approve the...
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is, let's see here. Consideration of approval of the second amendment to the Development Agreement to increase the guaranteed maximum price for the redevelopment of the Wilmington City block bounded by Chesterton Street, Grace Street, North 2nd Street, and North 3rd Street, and adoption of budget amendment to fully fund Project Grace direct cost. This woman?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So, today, we're here to discuss Project Grace and really do two things: establish the full budget for the direct cost and direct costs, or what we kind of categorize, all of the museum exhibits, all of the FFNE, you'll hear us say, which is furniture, fixtures, and equipment for both the library and the museum, and also allocate a portion of these direct costs to the Development Agreement as an amendment. So, first, to kind of rewind a little bit here with time, back in June of 2022, and it actually was probably established way back when, 2019, a placeholder budget was established for... Over time, as the full scope was realized, and also additional items added in, most impactful were the Dome Theater, the Curious Nature exhibit, coupled with inflation and just the changes in the building, this direct cost budget now is $21.5 million. So, what we're looking to do is allocate $5.4 million of that over to the developer through the amendment, and then still retain $16 million of that to be managed by the county. So, the $21.5 million budget is made up of these items. So, it's all of our exhibits that are going to go into the building, including the Dome Theater, its exhibit infrastructure, walls, lighting, flooring, electrical components to support the exhibits. It's some special inspections, some certain contracts that we, as the owner, have to hold on our side. It's the furniture and equipment that I talked about before, primarily some office furniture for both the museum and the library side, and library shelving is a big component of that. Audio/video, security components to include access badge readers, cameras, and our public art. So, that right there totals about $21.5 million. So, what we're looking at doing, again, to kind of go through the history here, is in August of 2023, we established the Development Agreement. That was at the time, actually, when we had Amendment 1, which reduced the amendment at that time to a total of $55.9 million. We now are going to increase it by the $5.4 million to directly allocate some of these items that it just makes sense for the contractor onsite to do and for Cape Fear Development to oversee. And primarily, that consists of some really big exhibit items, our Lucky Klima, Boss Water Table. These are elements that are really part of the building. In addition, they'll provide exhibit infrastructure. A good example of this is like a partition wall. It is definitely to our benefit to have Montieth, as the general contractor, build a partition wall for exhibits compared to paying the exhibit fabricator to build a partition wall. They can do it faster and cheaper, and do it now while they're in the facility. So, this will make our final amended Development Agreement then $61.3 million. I'm going to turn it over to Eric, and I'll be right back after he talks about this slide.
Good afternoon. In accordance with what Sarah just discussed, included with the materials for this agenda item is a budget amendment that provides for the full $21.5 million in total direct cost. This slide indicates proposed funding for these costs, which primarily includes a mix of cash reserves and loan sale proceeds. No new loans are proposed today, with the only loan proceeds being those that were obtained in a prior debt issuance that were previously allocated to this project because the original project became fully funded from other sources. The summary included with this agenda item includes additional detail on each of these funding sources, which I'm available to answer questions about. It should also be noted that fundraising in the form of exhibit and room sponsorships is ongoing, and revenue realized from those sources will be credited to fund balance as they are received.
So, the last slide here is our timeline and next step. So, we are already in April, and we are finalizing the exhibit design, and fabrication will begin. The building is due to be complete in August, and that's when the library will begin to move in with plans to open then in the fall. In December is when our actual exhibit installation will begin, and we will open in May to the public. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I also have David, who's on the facilities team, and Kate here, if there are any specific questions that I can't answer.
Thank you, Sarah, for that. I want to reemphasize something that you said originally, that original $7.5 million was simply a placeholder. We knew full well, and you communicated to us as a commission and our county manager, that that number was going to go up, and we had a better handle on what the exhibit costs would be, et cetera. So, I think there was some reporting that was done by the media that didn't quite understand that. I also want to make one other clear point. This is our decision, meaning the county's, this is not due to any cost overruns by the contractor. See, usually, when you see something, you know, a budget amendment or something like that, you know, it's easy to point your finger, in this case, at Montieth. That is not the case at all. These are our decisions to provide a Class A museum and library, decisions we made for the exhibits. So, that was not made clear, at least in one report that I read in the media, somehow saying that it was a, you know, a cost overrun, et cetera, that they... It was not that at all. This was planned all along to deliver a first-class museum slash library.
Absolutely.
Did I say anything wrong?
No, absolutely correct.
Good. Thank you very much for your hard work on this.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the second amendment to the Development Agreement between Cape Fear Development. Number two, move to adopt a budget amendment.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, next one is, Novant Health Incorporated has requested this public hearing is required by the Internal Revenue Code and the state law applicable to the National Finance Authority for issuance of tax-exempt bonds. The county is not financially responsible in any way for this debt. The bonds may not exceed $855 million, and the proceeds will be used to finance capital projects in multiple locations across the states of North Carolina and South Carolina. The financed projects in New Hanover County will be a new health care facility known as Novant Health Scottsville Medical Center to be located at 151 Scottsville Medical Park Drive, Wilmington, consisting of approximately 74 licensed inpatient beds, eight operating rooms, endoscopic procedure rooms, an emergency department, imaging and laboratory facilities, and related support service areas. Energy projects at the New Hanover Orthopedic Hospital and New Hanover Regional Hospital constituting certain energy-related improvements. Routine capital expenditures at New Hanover Orthopedic Hospital and New Hanover Regional Hospital. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
I want to recognize Mr. Boyer and County Attorney Smith to make remarks before we get started. Yes, sir.
My name is Charles Boyer, and I'm here on behalf of the National Finance Authority and Novant Health.
Talking to the mic.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm here on behalf of the National Finance Authority and Novant Health in the bond issuance. I just wanted to take a quick moment. You did a very good job introducing the matter, but the basic request is, as you said, there's a procedural tax requirement that you host a tax hearing called TEFRA, addiction in which a project will be located. And so, as you said, there's different jurisdictions across North Carolina and South Carolina. In this case, we are in New Hanover County because of the New Hanover County hospitals that are in your jurisdiction, so we ask you, as the governing body of the jurisdiction, to hold the hearing. The main thing is, the topic of the hearing for this is the nature and location of the projects to be financed, which you read forth in your statement. And the resolution that the commissioners are asked to be voting on is approval of the bond solely for the purposes of procedural tax law. And the procedural approval in no way puts any liability or debt onto the county, and will bring funds into the county to bring additional capacity, better facilities, and allow not to continue to improve the provision of care in New Hanover. I request, if necessary by the local rules, to have reserved the rest of my time at the end to make a clarification, if that is okay with you.
But I just want to make sure everybody knows that, under any circumstances, New Hanover County is not bound to anything.
They are not.
This is just certainly a procedure.
It is required by federal tax law that you host this hearing in every jurisdiction where the bond proceeds will be spent. The National Finance Authority, who issues bonds, is a national conduit issuer, is the issuer of the bonds. In no way is the county responsible for the debt or have any liability for the debt. It is just a federal requirement.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Boyer? Yeah. And, Mr. Boyer, your standing is you're passing one of these resolutions for Seith County, too, where Winston-Salem is the corporate headquarters of Novant is. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And also in South Carolina, in the county head, where that project is going. So, it's not just here in New Hanover County that you're asking for this resolution. You're asking in these other areas as well.
Yes, Commissioner. As currently expected, we are going to be requesting this in the town of Hilton Head, Brunswick County, Harleston County, Davidson County, Forsyth County, Jasper County, Mecklenburg County, New Hanover, I can't say that here, Pender County, and Alon County.
Thank you.
I have a question also, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
There is no matter of taxation that is being assessed against the people of New Hanover County in connection with this request.
No, this is not. There will be no tax on the county.
Thank you.
The reason, again, is just the federal law requires it to issue tax-exempt bonds for the benefit of a 501(c)(3) entity.
You've done a good job of explaining it, but we're going to try to get as many sound bites as we can for the record, so that the public, whenever the media decides which one they're going to pick and put out, it's going to be very clear to the public that in no way is the county, its citizens on the hook for this very large amount of money that's being completed. They're not being taxed in connection with it, that if something goes wrong, then citizens of New Hanover County are not going to be on the hook in connection with it. I'm just trying to say it every which way that I can. I believe my colleagues are trying to do the same, so that is clearly communicated to the community that this is something that ultimately will allow us to make some improvements, but is not being borne on their backs.
Yes, and I try to say it even clearer. There's no debt of the county, not a liability of the county. There is no tax associated with these bonds that can be issued onto the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last thing I want to say, it's all in the paperwork, too. Anybody?
Yeah.
Yes, we published notice in the paper in advance of this meeting with the details of all the projects and the topic of this hearing this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, as the county attorney, I would like to confirm, I agree with everything that council stated about this. In no way is it a debt of the county. And I guess, most importantly, it says so very clearly in the resolution you're being asked to adopt. Happy to add to or answering any other questions the board may have, but...
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Okay, we have, we open it up for speakers. We have one speaker, Mr. Schulman. You have three minutes. I know you already know that, but I just want to make sure I talk to you.
When I heard about this public hearing, I wondered what this was about, how it would affect the citizens, taxpayers, and voters. Then it was explained to me by one of your attorneys with the help of Novant. I thought about this. You have our best interests at heart. You tell us you're here to protect us. The hospital, even though it was not what the people wanted, the worst hospital in the state of North Carolina. You told us and assured us how awful this would be, even though the facts said otherwise. Then the quality of care got so bad that the state of North Carolina and United States Medicare officials warned Novant that either fix things quickly to a level where people were normally at risk of losing their lives, maimed for the quality of care, there was a timeline given. Now, county commissioners didn't tell us that Novant would lose Medicare and Medicaid and the ability to operate hospitals in New Hanover County, Brunswick County, and Pender County. I guess she didn't think it was something we'd want to know about, or care. But what I found interesting was...
The last thing I want to say, it's all in the paperwork too. Anybody?
Yeah.
Yes, we published notice in the paper in advance of this meeting with the details of all the projects and the topic of this hearing this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney.
As the county attorney, I would like to confirm, I agree with everything that council stated about this, in no way is it a debt of the county. And I guess most importantly, it says so very clearly in the resolution that you're being asked to adopt. Happy to add to or answering any other questions the board may have, but.
Okay, anybody have anything else?
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Okay, we have, we open it up for speakers, we have one speaker, Mr. Schulman. You have three minutes. I know you already know that, but I just want to make sure I talk to you.
When I heard about this public hearing, I wondered what this was about, how it would affect the citizens, taxpayers and voters. Then it was explained to me by one of your attorneys with the help of Novant. I thought about this, you have our best interests at heart, you tell us you're here to protect us, the hospital even though it was not what the people wanted, the worst hospital in the state of North Carolina. You told us and assured us how awful this would be, even if the facts said otherwise. Then the quality of care got so bad that the state of North Carolina and United States Medicare officials warned Novant that either fix things quickly to a level where people were normally at risk of losing their lives, maimed or for the quality of care, there was a timeline given. Now, county commissioners didn't tell us that Novant loses Medicare, Medicaid and the ability to operate hospitals in New Hanover County, Brunswick County and Pender County. I guess she didn't think it was something we'd want to know about, for care. But what I found interesting was when they, when the state has to, tells you you have to publish this, it wasn't published in New Hanover County. It was published in Winston-Salem at the request of Novant. I guess they didn't want us to know about that either, but it just says something about their integrity and their honesty. The only reason this information even got out was because I found out about it and I brought it to the media. The FAA warned Novant that the pilot of the helicopter that just crashed was a danger and needed to be evaluated, but they did nothing. They then, the president of Novant told staff specifically not to talk to anybody, the FAA is talking. Approximately six weeks before Commissioner Hayes died, I saw her at Novant Health, and she told me how great Novant Care was. I told her I was going to UNCW, she didn't go somewhere else, she was going to die. I guess I was right. At your funeral, you all acted how upset you all were. Did you think about your decision, given all the people who have had the same exact problem in their life from Novant? In my case, they didn't know how to medicate, do a simple medication. I went to UNC and they fixed a problem in less than two hours, a simple procedure, that meant Novant either didn't have the, isn't, didn't have the legislature was incompetent. Just doesn't give much business in Novant, does it? And they tried, by the way, for over a year. Mr. Riven Bark and Mr. Echols made a deal to give $26 million of tax mayor money away in a deal to buy a school bill for Novant, even though it was state statute that you have to, it has to be voted on all school buildings.
Mr. Schulman, your time is up, I'm sorry.
I'm sure you are.
Thank you. There's no one else to speak, so there's a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Chair, if you believe the motion to close the public hearing.
Can we get a vote on the? Move that we adopt the associated resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done. Okay, number eight is a request by New Hanover County, planning and land use to amend section 4.4, sections 6.3.2, section 2.3 and section 11.7 of the Hanover County Unified Development Ordinance related to accessory dwelling units, performance guarantees and non-conforming signs to meet North Carolina's general statute requirements. This is a public hearing, we will hear a presentation from staff, then any supporters and dependents, which will allow 15 minutes for their presentation and an additional five minutes for rebuttal. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. I know we recently had another maintenance amendment a few months ago, but wanted to give a quick reminder that the department has regularly been doing maintenance or housekeeping amendments since the completion of the UDO project in 2020. There are a few different types of maintenance amendments, some are clarifications of existing standards, others like the ones today are brought to us by the county attorney's office, so we stay up to date with changing legal requirements from the state. There have been three amendments identified for the UDO that we need to make. The first is related to building materials for residential construction. Except for in specific circumstances like in a historic district, local governments cannot regulate building materials for single-family homes outside of what's allowed under the North Carolina Residential Building Code. The UDO currently has a restriction on using shipping containers as building materials for accessory dwelling units. Because state law does not allow the county to regulate those building materials, that provision is unenforceable and will need to be removed. The Second Amendment is related to performance guarantees for development. State recently established a uniform review process for releasing performance guarantees that applies to all local governments. These are bonds related to the construction of a subdivision, which is separate from the kind of inspections or bonds that may apply to the permitting or construction of individual homes. You know, New Hanover County's process already complies with those changes, but we need to add them to the ordinance so they're clear for everyone. The last is related to signs. Statutes have added a new definition for on-premise advertising sign and has some provisions to allow the relocation or replacement of legal non-conforming signs. Planning Board considered this item at their March 6th meeting, Board unanimously recommended approval of the amendments, finding them consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan and reasonable and in the public interest because the amendments keep the UDO consistent with state requirements. Staff concurs with the Planning Board's recommendation and pending approval, the staff will update the UDO and post it to the county's website in the next few days. That concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Robert, thank you for that explanation. I know I brought up a couple of issues at the agenda review, and I had a chance to dig into it a little bit more and still have some outstanding questions. The first one, you know, being the one about the shipping containers, what we're really talking about here, if I hear you right, is the material that's used to make shipping containers, not the shipping container itself, it's just the metal cladding. Do I have that right?
That would be correct, yes, sir.
Great, so this is not a ban on shipping containers, you know, they're simply saying that we have to allow metal cladding as a building material.
That is one of those kind of questions I'd need to defer to a inspector, but yes, anything that is local zoning regulation on the materials used for single-family residential construction, we're prohibited from adopting.
Okay, but I see in the way that UDO is written here now, that we, after we've cleared up that metal siding, cladding thing, we, for some reason are not allowing manufactured homes. Why, why do we not like manufactured homes? Is there a reason behind that?
For a dwelling unit?
Yeah.
I think I'll defer to our director here to get into the background of that amendment.
So Commissioners Apple, I think one of the things that is helpful maybe to think about is at the time that these provisions were put into our ordinance, the county previously had not allowed additional ADUs behind homes, and so there were some concerns about what the impact might be on the character of a neighborhood. We have not as staff proposed changing the regulations about manufactured homes because we are still allowed to regulate those differently because they are not built to the single-family building code. Instead, they're inspected by HUD and have HUD stickers in order to allow for residential use. So again, the purpose of this amendment is only to remove the portions of the ordinance that legal has identified as being contrary to state law to fit some of these other provisions.
I have a feeling that one's coming. You explained it well, sorry, and on to the one about the no performance guarantees being It appears, the way I've read this, I'm struggling with this, so please give me some help with this, that right now, if one of our inspectors goes out and is, I'm in a hypothetical case, you have a new subdivision and you're required to put in a turn lane, for instance, to be to complete, and inspector goes out and says, oh, you're ready for your final, but you haven't put the turn lane in, that the builder or the developer can get an engineer or his employee to simply put a letter together that says, oh yes, it is. Now here's something that is, either the turn lane is in or it's not, but the way this is written, maybe we would have to allow him the final on the whole thing, in other words, overruling our inspector. So that's why, you know, it gives me heartburn. I think I went on, I won't go off again on a tangent about how much I respect our inspections department here in New Hanover County, but I just think this opens up a real, I don't know, Pandora's Box to allowing, you know, an engineer to rule what is obvious to an Any thoughts on that, Robert?
Just a point of clarification, so in, for your example, I think maybe different type of infrastructure, because a turn lane required off of a DOT road would be something that DOT would inspect.
Hmm, I see, okay.
And so it would be kind of outside of, and DOT would be the ones that tell it, but so let's, for instance, say sidewalk.
Yes, oh, much better, yes, thank you.
Something that we do regulate. If a sidewalk is required and we state sidewalk is not installed and their seal on whatever documentation stating that that sidewalk is there, that would probably be something we would talk with our county attorney's office about and see what the recommendations are in that kind of district.
So if the DOT required the turn and then came at last minute and says, you don't have to have it, is that what?
Well, essentially what I'm objecting to is that we've now handed approval process to an engineer who is working for the developer and can simply say whatever they feel is right, and the fix seems to be, you know, going straight to the legal system. I love lawyers, I think they're terrific, but you know, I would keep them out as much as possible of the building. I know somewhere in your reply to this is going to be, the state is the one who's driving these changes. I just think they're miserable.
So I will mention too, we're talking about the provisions that we are bringing for you today, this is not related to our inspections department. This is related to the infrastructure that's required as part of the process that a developer has placed a financial guarantee to the county to ensure that it's put into place and put into place to our specifications. So this is most likely to be used if there is a question about, was this road put into place or were these sidewalks put into place in accordance with our design requirements? Because we're not out there necessarily inspecting during the building process, but we do have our engineering department go out, our planners go out, make sure that things are in place before we release some of those funds. So this is not part of the building permit process, it's part of our subdivision process.
Yeah.
And if an engineer is willing to put their seal on it, that's their professional reputation on the line, and this is the part where I say, and the legislature has determined that that is sufficient reason for an engineer not to certify something that is not going to work because they are, they are professionally liable at that point. But again, if there is a difference of opinion, there is processes in place where we would consult with our legal team to make sure that we are doing what we need to as a county to make sure that our citizens are safe.
So what would happen to the engineer if he stamped, he says it's good and then we find out it's not, what happens then?
Potentially he'd be held, you know, accountable through the professional engineers. That's where the legal system kicks in, but of course would take years with an S, you know, for that to go. And meanwhile, I just would like to make the building process as efficient as possible. And when you've got inspections or our good people in the zoning department who drive out and go, wait a minute, the sidewalk's not here. That should be the word and not to be able to be overruled by an engineer's letter of any kind. Now, again, hypothetical, I don't know that that's happened, but I think it leaves that open. And there's one more example I'd like to cover and then I'll lay off because we're going to do what the state says, but you know, the, there is no requirement for a maintenance performance guarantee. This is money that's put aside so that something that a developer has said will happen, such as landscaping is the one. And as a builder, if you plant trees, you generally guarantee these trees are going to remain healthy for X number of years, two years, five years. If they die, there's a possibility that you put aside to guarantee that those will be replaced. That has been removed in this amendment. Rebecca or Robert, did I speak anything wrong there?
I believe that you are correct, there would not be a provision, it could be a requirement that a developer put forward funds for a stated period of time for maintenance.
That's correct.
Or these kinds of infra, the kind of infrastructure.
Which I think stinks. The fix for this is currently there. You put aside, you know, depending on how big your job is, money that would guarantee that the maintenance of whatever you've put in, and this by the way includes private roads, which in, if you extend this out, we deal with, this is the whole orphan road issue flash forward a number of years. And you know, developers under this now are not required to put aside anything, and the maintenance doesn't get done, the road gets potholes and it ends up coming right back to. So I.
So, you know, and, well, I was just going to say, in the development process, the folks build the road, install the water and sewer are not necessarily the same folks who build the house and then build, you know, create the HOA, and then, you know, the HOA to build up the residence who use those, that infrastructure once it's complete, and so it would be assessed through their covenants, the fees necessarily for that maintenance.
But the developer is responsible, sticking with the road, until he turns over the project after he sells more than 50% of the homes in a development, he's responsible, he turns it over to the HOA and that is passed on. But certainly, at least for that primary period in the beginning, before he sells 50%, they're responsible for it. Here, they, we're removing any requirement for them to, again, put aside a certain amount of money to make sure that road is maintained, and I think it's a mistake, that's all.
The only thing that I will mention, Commissioners Apple, and I don't know if this addresses your concern, I have a feeling it probably doesn't, but the changes that are being proposed don't change someone's responsibility for maintenance. All that they say is that we as a county cannot require you to pay us money that we hold that then you know you have available because we are holding for you in order to make sure you maintain it. So there would be other mechanisms in place that would come into play at that point, we just can't hold someone's money in order to make sure that they conduct what they're supposed to.
Thank you. Looking out for the owner or the person who's buying a house or in the process there to make it more efficient. If there's a pile of money, a small pile of money there, it's a lot easier to get that person who's responsible to respond. If they don't want it, or they're out of state, or they, you know, close up shop, we've got the money to go ahead to make sure this happens, so that the people who have bought their dream house are not left holding the bag and we're not back to having the legal system follow through what will be months if not years of litigation to get to the point to hold that person responsible. I'm just trying to make it easier and more efficient, but I know larger forces working against that on these particular issues.
Sounds like we need to hire their lobbyists.
I'm sorry?
No, it sounds like we need to hire their lobbyists.
Well, we already have some lobbyists, maybe you put them to work in that, but I, Mr. Chair, I thank you and all of you for your patience, it's really frustrating to me. Examples I've brought up here today are real life that I've seen and dealt with, and there's a fix. We've done a great job, zoning department, of putting this together and it's being undone, and I don't think it's to the public's benefit.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would just offer that while I understand the concerns that Commissioners Apple has put forth, at least on our gender review, it was my understanding that at present, at least as regards the inspection, engineering issue that you raised, that at present it is a remote concept, we don't have any examples of that that we can point to at this time. And I certainly agree with you that we should absolutely be able to, and do, respect the integrity of the work of our inspection team. I would also offer that I generally speaking, respect the professionals who get engineering degrees and certification, and presumably, these people care very much about their work and are not going to sign off on something that just because they have a business connection with somebody who's hired them, that they're going to start selling their opinions whenever they're in, they're not actually correct. So I don't necessarily know. So I, I don't necessarily know that I believe we have a widespread issue where our inspections department and engineers that are working on behalf of development companies are going to be regularly at odds with one another and that they will be overriding them. If in fact that becomes the case, I would certainly suggest that we would want to raise that issue with the members of our state delegation and make them aware that this has become a problem. But at present, I don't believe that it will be a problem. I think that we have enough very talented, not only inspectors, but also engineers in our community who are going to almost entirely agree with each other on whether or not something meets the thresholds that it's supposed to meet. So, just to say it again, engineers, I believe, can be trusted to give us good opinions. They have professional reputations that they don't want to lose. And I sure would hope that if there were to be any kind of issue, engineers in our community selling their opinions that are not correct, that, that would, that would be held against them and that we would use that information to go back to the state delegation and say, "This needs to be corrected." But, I would also offer as a tertiary point to all of this, at least my understanding with this issue that the state has indeed told us we need to make changes on to create efficiencies, perhaps, and you disagree with that, clearly disagree with that. But I just don't know that we can say yet that that definitively will happen. I am willing to let this play out, we have no choice, but to let this play out because, again, this is what the law says that we have to do. And again, if we get evidence that there's something untoward happening, will our staff please let us know that there are problems, that we're running into conflicts where our inspectors and the engineers that are being hired to work on projects are regularly at odds with one another? Rebecca, can you tell me that you're going to do, please let us know if that becomes an issue?
Yes, we would definitely let you know if that became an issue.
All right, thank you. Mr. Matthews, are you here today on behalf of the, the planning board?
Matthews, Commissioner Skleese, I can only have to look out the window for an example of when things don't go right. The building next door, the Cobb Annex. Just pointing that out. Selling anything, it was just a mistake, but there was money that we had set aside as a result of that. Hanson, great to see you. What?
Always.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
Thank you, Commissioner Zappel. Mr. Matthews, thank you for being here. Can you elaborate for us a little bit about your board's discussion about these issues, whether or not any concerns were raised, whether or not you feel confident about, apparently you made 5-0 to us, just give us a little bit of background on how we got here.
Absolutely, we'll tag it in on, on your, your intro. As you'll remember, we have an engineer, an architect, a justice attorney, among others, on the, on the planning board. So various disciplines were, were represented in that discussion. I understand Commissioner Zappel's concerns about the, the holes that are being left open, but ultimately, we believed that what choice do we have other than to be in conflict with the new state regulations or to change the ones that we have? Like a lot of other things, it's not going to be perfect, but I don't see how, how we remain in, in compliance with the new state regs without changing them. And there was no long discussion or overriding concern by any of those members of the board who were licensed in those disciplines mentioned earlier.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Anyone else? Okay, there's no questions, so I'm gonna close the hearing. And we've already had the board decision. Does anybody? Okay, is there a motion to vote on the amendment?
Yes, sir, I move that we approve the amendment. The amendments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, number nine is a public. In eastern Carolina, commercial real estate applicant on behalf of Paul and Jane Chaucer, property owners to rezone the existing CZDB, CB, Community Business Zoning of approximately 0.36 acres located at 2626 Castle Hain Road to CZDB-B-1 Neighborhood Business for the use of medical and dental office and clinic and other limited uses. This is a public hearing. We hear a presentation from staff and the applicant and any opponents. We each be allowed 15 minutes for their presentation and additional five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. The application request rezone approximately 0.36 acres from a conditional CB Community Business District to a conditional B1 Neighborhood Business District for the use of a medical and dental office and clinic and other limited uses. The property is on Castle Hain Road, just north of the avenue intersection and was previously rezoned from R20 Residential, Conditional CB Community Business District in February 2020. Trinity Health, an existing medical office located at 2526 Castle Hain Road, is proposing to relocate their business approximately north to the currently vacant commercial site. From the aerial photography, we can see the commercial building, detached accessory building and surrounding commercial and residential development. Here is an aerial image of the site before the improvements. This is the view of the current exterior of the building. This is the view of the gravel park behind the building. And this is the view of the driveway and the accessory in the back. This is an example of a representative development in the district. Here are examples of use of residential homes. The applicant is proposing no changes to the site plan approved under the Z2226 rezoning in 2023. The site plan shows what is currently on the ground. There is, there is an existing commercial building centrally located on the property, an accessory building to the rear. There is parking at the front and back of the property. Fence buffers are located at the north and eastern property boundaries. And there's landscaping around the parking lot and street yard. The property has full access to Castle Hain Road. The applicant will need to work with and see DOT to upgrade the driveway. There have been a few commercial and residential product, projects nearby within the last few years. Along Castle Hain Road, there is one unfunded state transportation improvement project and one nearby TIA for the Wright Spurler Apartments. The project is below the threshold that requires a traffic impact analysis. In addition, the approximate peak hour trips is not expected to change. Trinity Health is located approximately 1,000 feet south of the subject site. The business currently operates from a unit in a commercial retail development. If approved, the rezoning would allow the existing business to relocate to a small commercial building with a private driveway, dedicated parking and buffers to neighboring residential properties. Both locations are along Castle Hain Road and located between residential and commercial uses. Just south of the property are several other commercial businesses, including a Family Dollar, Advanced Auto Parts, Food Lion Grocery Store and other commercial developments. The project would meet two of the county's strategic goals. The first is related to sustainable land use and environmental stewardship. The second is related to community safety and well-being. Sorry about that. The 2016 comprehensive plan designates this property as community mixed use, which focuses on small-scale mixed-use development patterns that serve all modes of travel. On March 6, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning. They found the application to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because the rezoning provides for the types of uses recommended in the community mixed-use place type. The planning board also found recommending approval of the rezoning request was reasonable and in the public interest because the proposal serves as an appropriate transition between existing residential and commercial uses. Staff concurs with the planning board's recommendation of approval. All existing conditions that currently apply to the property will remain. The conditions are related to the list of allowed uses with the additional use of medical and dental office and clinic, as well as driveway access, landscaping, sign permitting and exterior lighting. Should the rezoning be approved, the project will be subject to additional development review through the technical review committee. This concludes my presentation. County engineering is here to answer any questions as well as the applicant.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
No, sir.
Ma'am. Mr. Hennig?
Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the commission, thank you for the opportunity. My clients are mental health professionals and they are stepping up to being from a tenant to a landowner for their own personal wealth growth. And they're real excited about it. And this is a project that I've been a part of, it's an adaptive reuse. So we're not changing anything about the physical footprint, except for complying with DOT-permitted driveway, which is about 30 feet in length to cover the right of way. And so I'm happy to answer any questions. My clients are with patients now, so they could not be here tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you. John, just a quick question. What, what's going to happen to the property that they're leaving? Or is that, do you have any idea?
So that strip mall is owned by a single owner and so it'll just be put out, put out to market for lease?
Yeah, okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There are no statements, so unless there's further discussion, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any discussion?
And the applicant up after the discussion. If any.
John.
Mr. Chair, you need to ask Mr. Hennig.
I am getting ready to. Before we proceed with the vote, I'd like to invite the applicant to the podium. Based on the four important items presented during the public hearing, would you like to withdraw your petition or proceed with the vote?
Proceed with the vote, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does anyone have a motion?
I'm going to move to approve the rezoning. I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan. The rezoning provides for the types of uses recommended in the community mixed-use place type. I also find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because the proposal serves as an appropriate transition between existing residential and commercial uses. In addition, it will expand the opportunity for additional medical offices in the area. There is, there are five recommended conditions. I hereby make reference to those and incorporate them into my motion. And there usually is some language that we have in here about it being accepted within a certain number of days. Can you read that for me or provide that for me?
Commissioner Skleese, that's no longer necessary because that's kind of, it's baked into the UDO, all applicants are.
Very good.
On knowledge. The consent is, I write acknowledgement, agreeing to these conditions within seven business, within a number of business days. Robert shaking his head, seven, to acknowledge the consent.
Well, that very messy motion, Mr. Chair, is my motion.
Okay.
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Could I just ask Ms. May to step up to the podium, please?
You want to verify?
I am. Well, give her just a moment and can we put the camera on her, please? Thank you. This was your first project to bring forward to the commission. You did an excellent job, you got a win. So you're, you're 1-0 and we welcome you to the representatives. Did a wonderful job, Catherine, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you for having me. Nice job.
Good job. Okay, next is speaker, folks that have signed up to speak. And I'm, if y'all all listen one time, you got three minutes and there's a timer right here on the podium that you're gonna be speaking at. But in the three minutes, that's it. It's just the way it has to be. And the first one is gonna be Stephanie Hunt. Stephanie, you would just, your name and your address.
Name is Stephanie Hunt. Address is 6717 Piedmont Place in Wilmington, North Carolina, 28411. Good afternoon, my name is Stephanie Hunt. I am the CEO of a boutique consulting firm dealing with emergency management and homeland security for senior leaders and elected officials. Much of what I deal with deals with crisis communications and reputational risk. But I've spent more than 25 years in public service in government at the local, federal and international level, as well as the private sector. Throughout my career, we have implored the public that if they see something, say something. And yet, we demand and put on administrative leave our own fire captain, speaking up about the health and safety of his firefighters at Station 13 in Castle Hain. You as elected leaders ran on platforms of change and help and encouragement and demanded our votes and our money to help you do that. And yet, where you sit now, you turn a blind eye and a deaf ear to someone who is advocating for helping people and change. How dare you ignore the illnesses of our firefighters? How dare you say our public safety personnel are less than their leadership and you? And you ignore the fact that they are sick. What's worse is you allow a person who saw what was happening and spoke up to be disrespected, retaliated against, and, and who knows what else? Fired? See something, say something, unless you work for the New Hanover County Fire Department. And then you get put on administrative leave and you get told to seek legal counsel. Hard to imagine what else retaliation looks like. Or is it that fire department and county leadership are sad that they don't have the leadership skills necessary to fight for personnel? Or is this ego thing? Or perhaps there are more issues folks don't want us knowing about through oversight or an investigation? Each and every one of you is ashamed for not paying attention to this many, many months ago and allowing your senior leaders to push this aside. But please, explain this away during election season. Do better. Be better. That's what we elected you for. Thank you.
Adrienne Garber?
Good afternoon, my name is Adrienne Garber. I live at 4921 Red Heart Drive in Wilmington. In the Keys, there is no new construction since 2023 total moratorium, unless you tear something down that you can build. Due to the Florida Environmental Land and Water Management Act of 1972, intended to prevent uncontrolled development that would cause substantial deterioration of the environment and to ensure that the island population can be safely evacuated within four hours. Before the moratorium, new construction permits through the strict ROGO system or rate of growth ordinance, a permit system where applications with the highest scores are awarded permits after completing a number of steps. One of the steps is for every piece of land built on, another piece of land has to be purchased elsewhere and not built on. I will be happy to email you that. New Hanover County is practically an island, too. We have natural resources to protect, too. Do we have a hurricane evacuation plan in place for our new population? What is our population? 300,000? 350,000? We have only two main highways heading inland. Have we ever implemented changing all incoming lanes to outgoing to get everyone out? In danger now? I am calling the county to declare a 90-day moratorium on all new construction permits countywide, assess our population, purchase as much green space as possible, and then implement our own ROGO system for all future permits. own ROGO system for all future permits. And in 2050, when I and my great-grandchild are standing on the 52nd floor of the Sappho Tower downtown, I want to look out and see our residents on the West Bank. And to the north, I want to see Sledge Forest. Saving this forest demonstrates true stewardship of this beautiful place. I have to build a five-year moratorium on all permits for all 4,083.98 acres of Sledge Forest, declare eminent domain, and rezone it as a nature preserve. If you don't build it, they won't come. We can all have a better quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Caroline Connolly?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and good afternoon, citizens. My name is Caroline Connolly. I'm a resident of Castle Hain. I live on McDougal Drive in the Wooden Shoe Neighborhood, right next to Sledge Forest. I am a stage-three breast cancer survivor, and that might come as a surprise to you upon first glance of a seemingly healthy young person. I was 28 when I was diagnosed unexpectedly. Chemotherapy treatment was proposed immediately. For two years, I continued working through treatment. Chemo every three weeks, back to work. Radiation every day for five weeks, back to work. Five weeks off for surgery, back to work. The PTSD that will be with me forever, and still, back to work. My work, I am an elementary teacher. I have dedicated years to New Hanover County public schools, and now I work at the Friends School of Wilmington. I am lucky that I work at a school whose personal mission is environmental stewardship and conservation, and I have a large community of parents and staff behind me championing this work. I share the deeply personal story of my health for a few reasons. The gene mutation that I have that is responsible for my cancer can be genetically passed down. It starts with me. It can also be acquired through exposure to carcinogens. While I beat cancer, it was my own mind, not my disease, and not my treatment that I thought was going to end me, telling me that I was not strong enough to survive this. But I am a testament that we are all capable of surviving hardships beyond our wildest imagination, and I am a testament that a young person with a whole life ahead of them could have taken away any minute. Secondly, I share this is my life's purpose, to educate, nurture our future generations, something I feel that you all can probably relate to with the career you have chosen. While for financial reasons I had to continue working through my treatment, it was also my students who helped me survive. I needed them, and they needed me. In varying ways and varying degrees, the responsibility of protecting our most vulnerable population, children included, fall on the shoulders of the competent adults who are the contributors to our society, and the adults who chose to dedicate their lives and careers to it. You may remember, a month ago, I mailed you some artwork and some letters from my students.
Ms. Connolly, your time's up. And if somebody else would loan you some of their time, they're more than welcome to.
Yes, sir.
I don't know that that will happen, but if they would, they're welcome to it.
Good evening. I'm Beth Connolly, the mother of Ms. Jen, and I'd like to yield my minutes to her.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You're welcome.
You may remember a month ago that I mailed you some artwork and notes from my students. In their envelope, I wrote the phrase, "In times of crisis, teach the children to protect theirs." This was something that I had learned in the wake of Hurricane Helene. This is a time of crisis, and the children are looking to you. It is not only a call for personal morals and values, but your professional commitments. They are looking to you to protect them from a basic fundamental right of clean drinking water taken out from under them. While Wade Miller suggests in previous communications that residents of the Wooden Shoe Neighborhood declined or did not answer to have their water tested, this is untrue. My household, as well as many others, had theirs tested. While I am blessed that my household's water came back clean, the current result, if this development moves forward, could potentially be catastrophized with disruption of disruption of toxic plumes at nearby GE. The waste of runoff to destruction of loan of proposed development in inclusion with toxic plumes has incredibly serious consequences. No parent, no grandparent, no adult should shoulder the weight, the emotional burden of their child, their grandchild, having cancer. No child should be exposed to carcinogens or environmental hazards that can have life-altering or fatal consequences. Our children deserve more than to be another statistic for young cancer diagnosis. They deserve to recreate and fundamentally exist in a habitat, in an environment that does not put them at risk. During the month of March honoring famous women in history, I found myself talking about Julia Butterfly with my students. The conversation rolled organically over to the Sledge movement. While looking at the website, students able to name, identify animals and their habitats, because that's what New Hanover County students learn. They learn their place in the ecosystem, the delicate balance. With this understanding that comes naturally from children, at what point we, as adults, at what point have we lost that? Cutting down old growth for the sake of a golf course or the sake of luxury homes, the Band-Aid of planting new trees is not a justifiable compromise as proposed in current development plans. During this class session, my students made the connection to the weather experience, the weather our area experiences. Tropical storms, flash flooding, and hurricanes, nothing that any of us are immune to or can outrun. It's obvious to anyone, these experiences are increasing in severity as the years go on. There was not much left for us to say.
Ma'am, that was another three minutes. It's up.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
Brian, please? Good afternoon.
My name is Brian Puskas. I've been asked to speak today on behalf of the community of Castle Hain. My mother Jean, brother David, and I own 25 acres on French Village Avenue, which is the road right beside New Hanover County Fire Station 13. My mother has resided in the residence there since it was built in 1965. The Puskas family has lived in Castle Hain for 125 years. My mother will turn 85 this August, and many of her neighbors are elderly and have lived for generations in the Castle Hain community. One of the key services Station 13 provides emergency medical response. We are thankful to have the station and its staff as part of the community. The staff has shown themselves to be highly trained and extremely competent. The community realizes that the staff is only as good as the leadership they are provided. Captain Steve Hunt has proven himself to be courageous and an effective leader and provides a key role as a paramedic. Through personal interactions, the community finds Captain Hunt to be honest, personable, patient, and understanding. We ask that Captain Steve Hunt be reinstated to full-time active duty at Station 13. We know Captain Hunt puts the safety and health of his community and his staff first, and we are safer with him on duty. The community is excited about the new fire station being built in Castle Hain and are thankful to the county for spending their tax dollars on this vital part of the community. We assume the county commissioners will be there for its opening and hope you will spend some time getting to know more about Castle Hain. We have a rich history and wonderful citizens. Unfortunately, the community of Castle Hain often feels like their voices aren't heard, as we have no one from the community as a county commissioner or on important boards such as the Planning Board. We ask that the county commissioners hear our voices today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes the, that, Mr. County Manager, you have anything?
Sir.
Anybody else got anything to say? This meeting is adjourned.